Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the August 3, 2021 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Right, I've got a couple of announcements. First, I'd like to announce that any members of the public who are attending this meeting can have their parking validated if they parked in the county's parking facilities or use public transit to attend the meeting. You can see one of the officers who's here on the way out, and they can give you validation for your parking or transit. Valid for today only. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on by the Board at our meeting this evening. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as it has been published?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say, actually, before I call for a vote on this, are there any members of the public who have any questions about the consent agenda? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we come to public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name, address, and phone number with our county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is the Board's chance to listen to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the Board? I see Don Yelton has signed up. So are there any other members of the Board, or any members of the public who wish to speak during public comment this evening? All right, Mr. Yelton, please come on up.
Sorry to take the time to take my hat off, but I want to be able to look each and every one of you in the face. Because as you know, I always look at the consent agenda. And as a citizen, what I see is money going to the homeless, money going to the drug addicts, money going to this group and to that group, but never once mentioning the hard-working taxpayer that's keeping the government afloat. And I don't, I'm never, it amazes me how, you all are supposed to be intelligent people. You've got education, college degrees, experience, life experiences. When you reward somebody for sitting on their butt and doing nothing and put them in a home, what are you gonna get? More people sitting in the home. Do you all realize, you've heard it for past, that it is true? I've talked to them. Madison County brings their homeless to Asheville and drops them out. You're getting a reputation all over the country as we take care of the homeless, we take care of the drug addicts. And now, you're taking care of paying taxes for people. What about me? Don't I deserve a break on my taxes? Doesn't the people that watch this thing deserve breaks on taxes? You all can sit up there and say, well, we're not gonna talk to anybody, it's just your time to talk to us, to talk at you. Well, you can darn well believe I'm gonna talk at you till I'm six foot under. Because I'm hoping somebody up there's brain gets a synapse in there that says, gee, when we take care of the homeless and we take care of the drunks, we're gonna get more of them. Because you got a bunch of them right now. I drove down Patton Avenue today. I had to go over to the Board of Elections for doing a little thing later on that I'm gonna be doing. And I saw two people sitting in front of Jubilee, right there in the front, saw another guy come by and talk to them, they chatted like they know each other. You got it on every corner, folks. Now, you business people are trying to hope that you'll buy their hotels and motels when they ain't no good. But guess what? That's all you're gonna have. You're gonna run out of money. And eventually, the COVID money will be gone. You can spend all of it you want to now, but when it's gone, Al, you've been around a long time, sorry I called your name, Al, you and I both know, when that money's gone from the government, guess what? We'll have to cough it up. So I hope somebody up there realizes, you feed something, it grows. Please, think about it. I got eight seconds left, so I'll give you eight seconds back from having a laugh.
All right, thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the Board during public comment? All right, very good. We move on to presentations, and we've got two. The first is a presentation from the Vaya Health Board. And Brian Ingram, I think, is here to give us some updates. Thanks for being with us.
So, Mr. Ingram sends his regards. He's on the road today in another county speaking.
I'm sorry.
I'm Larry Hill from Vaya, I'm the Chief Financial Officer. Yes, so glad to be with you tonight. Thanks for letting us bring our annual update to, about Vaya Health. I do want to recognize Angie Gardner, who's in the audience, one of our community relations employees. So, let's go to the first slide. So, for those of you who may be new to knowing about Vaya, you know, what is Vaya? We're a public managed care company. We do not service or provide services directly. We help coordinate care using Medicaid, federal, state, local funding for the support of a certain population, specifically mental health, substance use, and ADD for all of our 22 westernmost counties. Vaya Health is one of seven such organizations throughout the state, known as a local managing entity, managed care organization. Currently, we employ 450-plus staff with an annual budget of $462 million, with almost 90% of that going to direct caregivers for this population. So rather than me describing Vaya Health, let me have a video played that'll give you a little better idea. Thank you.
I'm Rebecca McCloy. I am a woman in long-term recovery. But nine years ago, I was a woman standing on a busy highway, trying to sum up the courage to step out into traffic. And I had given up. I had no hope for my future. I had no hope of ever living a fulfilling life. That's when my husband found some hope, by way of Vaya Health. Vaya Health saved my life.
Vaya Health manages Medicaid, federal, state, and local funding for services and supports related to mental health, substance use disorder, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. Our organization has grown steadily in North Carolina's public behavioral health system. Our community-based approach helps ensure our members receive high-quality, whole-person care. Our person-centered approach extends beyond our members. Vaya's education opportunities help community members support their own wellness and gain a deeper understanding of others. Our access to CareLine is available to anyone experiencing a behavioral health crisis anytime, day or night. Vaya collaborates with local health departments, hospitals, court systems, law enforcement, first responders, and other community stakeholders. Our care managers work closely with members to help them navigate their unique healthcare needs and identify ways to pursue life goals.
Vaya is helping our members support their dreams of having a job through services like the Innovations Waiver and Supportive Employment, and creating this micro-enterprise directory. My name is Michelle Cates, and I'm an Ownstead Care Manager with Vaya. I am inspired by the ADD community because they have such a drive and so much personality, and they just want to be a part of the community, and I love helping them achieve that.
Through the Transitions to Community Living Initiative, called TCLI, we support people with mental illness to live as independently as possible in our local communities.
It's important for folks to have choice. Long ago, individuals or adults with severe and persistent mental illness had one choice, and that was an institution. Sometimes, housing is all they need for that first step for them to be successful in living in the community and becoming a whole person medically, physically, you know, connecting with employment, all those things that you feel and you do to feel home.
My name is Kelsey Key Clark, and I am the Transition Manager for TCLI at Vaya Health. I love being the hope in the world.
Vaya helps ensure our region is home to a strong healthcare workforce. We worked with local providers to open or expand facility-based crisis centers throughout the region, including the Kailin-Burrell Child Crisis Center, only the second of its kind in the state. When we work together to make sure everyone can reach their potential, we all benefit.
Because of Vaya Health, and because of that phone number, here I am, a peer trainer at Vaya Health, supporting our members to find hope, help, and healing, supporting our members to get on a career path in the field of recovery, to support our peers and our members to live their best life. I think a lot of folks that work at Vaya, I don't think they have any idea of the impact they truly have.
All right, thank you for letting me share that little video story. You know, when I, when I look at it from the CFO perspective, I think about metrics, I think about, you know, how are we doing comparing to peers? This is each of the seven LME/MCOs that provide this care across the state, Vaya being the last column, the red line being the state threshold for certain supermeasures. Not gonna spend a lot of time, but I just want to give you an example of the pride in which we take with our work. And then the traffic lighting, we're at the green at the bottom. These are metrics around, you know, our integrated care, follow-up after discharge for both state services and Medicaid. Same thing here with our mental health penetration rates on the left, and then substance use on the right. Leading or at leading for the state is Vaya. The next here with same thing, but for the Medicaid population. Very proud of these numbers, proud of the employees, the caregivers, the managed care leaders that help make this all a leading organization. So, what's next for Vaya? This is, this is real-time news. So if you may have noticed, you know, maybe a more obscure, noteworthy item, Vaya was just awarded a tailored plan, which is the next step in Medicaid transformation for North Carolina. State, the state of North Carolina is adopting standard plans that started this July 1st, and standard plans have rolled out next year. We will take on not only the behavioral health side for this population, but an entire wraparound, including physical care for that population. So we are in readiness and implementation mode as that goes live next July 1st. You can see that each one of the six regions will be serviced. Now, as we look ahead, there is another big piece of news for us. So, the LME/MCO headquartered out of Charlotte, Mecklenburg Cardinal Innovations, they are going to be consolidating with Vaya Health. Some of their counties are going to go to other LME/MCOs, but the majority of their catchment area and their counties will consolidate to Vaya sometime next year. So we will not be only 22 counties in western North Carolina, but somewhere in the neighborhood of 32 counties throughout North Carolina that Vaya will be managing that care for. Our current size of our population that we would serve would grow by 65%, and the map would look something like this, with the dark blue being those counties served by the Vaya organization here headquartered out of Asheville. So, those are my comments. I'll ask for any questions. Thank you for the opportunity for our update. Appreciate that.
Thank you for being with us, Mr. Hill. We appreciate it. All right, the next item is a presentation on the Strategic Plan Dashboard, and Rafael Baptista from Performance Management will help us out with this item.
Good evening, folks. I'm Matthew Baker. This is my colleague Burnett Walls, who will be presenting at this time. Mr. Baptista sends his condolences, he had another.
Very good. Thanks for being here.
Every time we come before this body, we try to provide an update on where we are in terms of our strategic plan. Tonight's update is for the dashboard. This is an external-facing dashboard, so that the public can kind of see and monitor the progress of the strategic plan priorities that we put in place. The next time we'll be coming before this Board, we'll be using that dashboard to provide a performance update, and we'll also be speaking to building capacity for innovation for this county's staff, and also speaking to the community survey that we're preparing. At this time, I'm going to turn over this presentation to my colleague, Mr. Walls, and he's going to walk you through a brief presentation on the dashboard.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm excited to be here with you all tonight to share with you the Strategic Plan Dashboard that we have been developing and plan on launching at buncombecounty.org. And before doing so, we would welcome your thoughts and comments. While we're here tonight, I'm gonna take the opportunity to share with you some high-level elements of the dashboard, as well as a brief video that will walk you through the contents. So currently, the dashboard will contain 25 departmental business plan goals at the time of launch. The business plan goals are aligned to all four of the community focus areas of the strategic plan. The dashboard, the hierarchy of the dashboard mirrors that of the strategic plan, in that it aligns focus areas, organizational goals, as well as departmental business plan goals. The dashboard will be updated on a quarterly basis, and I want to take a moment just to call out that not all of the departmental business plan goals have the same reporting period nor reporting frequency. The dashboard has goals that will be reported on an annual basis, a semi-annual basis, as well as a quarterly basis. And currently, approximately 25% of the goals do not have data. However, within the next two quarters, all of the goals will have data reflected in the dashboard. So at this point, I want to pause for a moment and share the video, and then we'll address any questions or comments that you all may have.
I think we have a video. Strategic Goals and Navigating the Buncombe County now has a new dashboard to help you navigate how well Buncombe County is performing in its strategic goals, and navigating the system is very easy. First, click on Explore Focus Areas in Action to get started. Here you will see four columns with our focus areas and goals. Let's click on Environmental and Energy Stewardship as an example. Here, you will read about the rationale behind the goal and see a tacometer that represents whether we're reaching our goals based on the annual timelines. For more information about the objectives, let's click on Learn More under Reduce Greenhouse Gas Emissions. At the top of the page, you will see every department associated with the reduction goal. You can either scroll down the page to see them all, or click on a specific department at the top to see how they were faring for their annual goals. You will also be able to read more about how each department plans on reaching these goals, and view the chart to the right of the tacometer to see how the project is progressing. Feel free to scroll through all of the data. More will be added and updated quarterly.
So before we launch into questions, I did want to mention that this dashboard, this is the launch version, this is the phase one, will be adding content and context as time goes on, as well as updating the data that's relevant for individual goals. So as Burnett said, we'd be happy to take any questions or get your thoughts on this dashboard at this time. We will be launching this dashboard later this week, most likely tomorrow evening, and we will make sure that we commence with a promotion campaign to the public as well. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. We don't have any old business. Anything to report from the county manager?
No reports, sir.
All right, very good. So we come to new business, and the first item under new business is consideration of COVID strategies, and Stacy Saunders, our Public Health Director, is...
Michael Frue.
Actually, Michael Frue is here to present this item.
I guess I'm gonna, well, this is JD. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, things have been moving rapidly lately with the COVID front, as Stacy reported earlier. We know that on Thursday of last week, Governor Cooper issued Executive Order 224. In brief, what that order did was give all workers within the governor's authority, within his office, to provide proof of full vaccination or be tested at least once a week for COVID-19. He has directed that the Office of State Human Resources work between now and August 13th to develop policies and procedures for the mechanism of tracking that, reporting that, and making sure that works. He has ordered that any workers who violate these new procedures and policies would be subject to disciplinary action up to and including dismissal, and it does also allow for accommodations. Those reasonable accommodations would be consistent with the EEOC requirements, such as religious, sincerely-held religious beliefs or medical conditions. Also, with that executive order effective yesterday, August 2nd, if a worker is not fully vaccinated, then they'll be required to wear a mask in all state facilities, subject to the governor's office control. The next element that's been popping up recently is last week, I'm sure everyone saw news and has read reports, that there's been vaccine mandates issued. Today, there was one I saw that came from Denver, all its municipalities, all its, all its aspects, not just related to healthcare. Mecklenburg County has a mandate that's primarily for its healthcare provisions, and we've also all seen that in the private sector. Many companies in Wall Street say, get a vaccine or don't show up for work. And that, that's really what the, that just leads me to think of the case out of Texas, which brought the, we were talking about emergency youth, use authorizations a little while ago during the briefing conference. So the FDA hasn't fully approved all vaccines, but the EAU, Emergency Youth Authorizations, are found not to really be a consideration for the legality of imposing a vaccine mandate, because that's really just to provide the person who's receiving a shot a choice. You get an informed decision that you can say yes or no. So I think that's what drives some of the decision-making for whether or not there should be vaccine mandates, or whether or not there should be an approach, such as Governor Cooper has, has selected. So county staff has been working on this. We have those two choices. Is it a vaccine mandate, or do we give employees a little more option, say, either you get a vaccine, or you show proof of vaccination, and everyone who's not vaccinated, wear a mask? Staff is, wants to recommend and wants to proceed to look into having the requirement for proof of vaccine or tested once a week. If a person is not vaccinated, then they would be required to wear face coverings. Now, this, I'm not speaking about the other recommendations of our Health Director, which is for everyone to mask up indoors for the near term. What we need to do still, these are working in a hurry, I've drafted policies for a mandate or the vaccination, or proof of, sorry, or be tested once a week. So those policies are drafted, but we need to work with HR personnel and with our public health personnel to make sure we have the procedures in place to properly, properly implement that. We hope to bring that back to the Board on August 17th. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to give you any answers I can, or Stacy hopefully is here, and we can try to answer that. But that's where we're leaning at this point. I did some quick research also following our briefing discussion, and I saw two sources that said, there's a lot of push on FDA to hurry up with the final approvals for the Pfizer and the Moderna, and they hope to have those in place by early September. Of course, that's a moving target.
All right, Mr. Frue, thank you for the information. Are there any questions from Board members, or any questions or comments? So you're not requi, I guess, I guess it's one procedural question. So no action's being proposed for tonight, but you're giving us a heads-up that this is current thinking, and that action could be taken at the next meeting. But just from a purely procedural standpoint, this is basically an HR policy decision, right? So is this something that the Board needs to vote on, or is this something that is within the manager and HR's sort of area of, you know, their purview? I want to make sure we're not doing anything that's outside of what makes sense for the Board to weigh in on with a formal vote, or just giving, you know, you can also just give informal feedback, but where does the actual decision point rest?
Well, it's, it's not a change. It's not a public hearing requirement, which is required currently under our personnel policy. This is not a change to the personnel policy. It is, as you mentioned, within the purview of human resources under the county manager. So it's a policy, but it's, it's an important decision, and I think it's something that everyone needs to see and be made aware of. We don't want to catch anybody asleep or unawares. But there's a lot of more work to do to get procedures in place to carry these out, either way.
So, but is the current thinking, Mr. Frue, that, that a policy proposal would be brought to the Board at the next meeting that you'd be asking us to vote on, or is it more of just kind of looping us in?
Our thought is that this would be more looping, looping the Board in.
All right. So at the next meeting, it'll be a follow-up discussion, and you'll let us know the steps that are moving forward at that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or feedback for our staff?
At that, at that point on the 17th, could we also just hear staff updates about policies regarding masking at indoor, masking within county buildings and facilities?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for the information. You know, I'm, I'm supportive of the direction that the staff are talking about. I think it's obviously a situation, though, that we all are gonna need to keep our eyes on. I mean, the numbers, while not as bad as they were back in, say, January or, you know, December, as, as Ms. Saunders talked about earlier... December, as Ms. Saunders talked about earlier, the trend lines are quite alarming. If they continue for very long at all, we could be back in a situation that's, you know, that's really bad. So if... Hopefully that doesn't happen. Hopefully, we see these trends start to level out, and more folks get vaccinated, and things improve. But if they, you know, if they do get worse, then I do think that we have to kind of continue to look at the different options that ultimately will be effective in getting us out of this, getting us beyond this pandemic, so which is really vaccines are the key to that. So thank you for the updates. If there's no other questions from the board, I think we're good on this item. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. The next item is Approval of the Annual Tax Collection Settlement, and Jennifer Pike... All right. Jennifer Pike is here. Will present this item.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for your time this afternoon. Now that we have found ourselves in a new fiscal year, there are a couple tax collection-related items that need board approval or adoption. Annual settlement and the order of collection. The annual settlement requires approval. There are several key components to the annual settlement. They are all in your packet. There's a good amount of information in those. There's a summary of net levy and collections for Buncombe County and the jurisdiction districts we bill and collect on behalf of. There is a separate report from the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles. This, the report that you'll find in your packet is an annual summary, again, for all districts and municipalities within Buncombe County that the state collects the registered motor vehicles on. There's a list of unpaid fiscal year 2021 property taxes, and then a list of taxpayers who've been found to be insolvent. So that would be uncollectible personal property taxes only. So the instances for insolvency would be if the business has closed and we cannot locate the assets, or the property has been removed from the county. So as of June 30th, 2021, Buncombe County regular property tax collection rate was 99.66%. So the total levy of regular property taxes, which is real estate and personal property, was $204,196,294. That left an uncollected at June 30 of $688,426. So to compare to last June 30, we were 99.39% collected, leaving $1,191,503 uncollected. Quick view of the collection rates for fiscal '21 for all the jurisdictions that we're responsible for billing and collecting on behalf of. So the order of collection is the second item that I need action on this evening. It requires adoption, and this is the section that gives me the authorization and the direction to collect for the fiscal '22 property taxes. So the requested actions I have for you this afternoon are the approval of the fiscal year 2021 annual settlement, and the adoption of the order of collection for fiscal year 2022. And before you initiate those, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't see any questions at this time. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the annual tax collection settlement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the order of collection?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing an Interlocal Agreement with the Town of Woodfin Regarding the Homeowner Grant Program, and Michael Frue will help us out with this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm pitch-hitting for Philip Harden today, who couldn't be here. The Town of Woodfin is asked to join in with the home grant program, which this board announced and approved along with the City of Asheville in the middle of July. The Town of Woodfin approved $15,000 to be into the program, and again, the program is... An applicant has to have lived in a property as primary residence for at least five years, and have 80% less earnings of the area median income as a household. Any grantee applicant who's successful in an application is not eligible for duplicate awards, that is, they couldn't be already in a state-authorized grant program related to circuit breaker, or elderly and disabled. And these grant funds, any grant funds award can be applied toward a tax bill or any general household bills, be that utility, mortgage, and the like. And so this is an interlocal agreement, because we're working with the town to administer its funds, so the statute requires that we have a resolution approved by the board spread upon the minutes.
Commissioners, is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Michael. All right. Next up is a resolution authorizing funding for Homeward Bound Permanent Supportive Housing Expansion, and Rachel Nygaard's going to get us started on this issue.
Good evening, Commissioners. Rachel Nygaard here. I am in front of you this evening to bring forward an item. Your requested action is to consider approval of the resolution authorizing funding for Homeward Bound Permanent Supportive Housing Expansion. We talked about this a little bit earlier today during the briefing agenda. Homeward Bound submitted a request to Buncombe County as part of our Fiscal Recovery Funding RFP, or Request for Proposals. Within that request is the purchase of a property, a current hotel property that would be converted into permanent supportive housing for people who are currently homeless, chronically homeless. The portion of Homeward Bound's request that they are earmarking toward the property acquisition is $2 million, and so that's the amount that the resolution, if you approve it, would authorize to invest in this project. The overall purchase price for the property is $6.4 million, and Homeward Bound has secured $2 million from the City of Asheville, $2 million from Dogwood Health Trust, and $400,000 the balance from private donors. The reason that this is in front of you this evening, ahead of the other proposals that came in as part of the RFP, is the urgency related to the property acquisition. Homeward Bound needs to have the funding in hand no later than August 14th, and so we have pulled that section of the proposal for your consideration. The balance of their request, which would be used if funded for renovations or operations, would be considered along with the rest of the recovery funding proposals. So this particular item is for the property only. A full copy of their proposal is in your packet, as is a copy of the resolution. Couple of high points from that. Overall, population of people experiencing homelessness in Buncombe County, according to the most recent point-in-time count, is 527. Of that, 220 were found to be chronically homeless, and this particular project would create affordable housing for 85, 85 units of permanent supportive housing. The organization is a longstanding organization within Buncombe County and operates since 1987. Since 2006, they've been doing permanent supportive housing, and they have an 89% success rate. Homeward Bound also brings a successful history of effectively managing federal funds, which is what would be involved in this project if approved. And the final point is that the organization is projecting a 39% reduction in chronic homelessness from this project. I am here as the ambassador for this proposal. We do have members representing Homeward Bound who are in the room, their interim executive director and housing project director, if you have detailed questions that are beyond what I can answer.
Rachel, could you repeat the stat you shared there at the very end? What's the decrease in homelessness predicted?
The proposed project is expected to reduce chronic homelessness in Buncombe County by 39%.
39% of chronic homelessness. Okay. All right. Commissioners, are there any questions for Rachel or for any of the members of the Homeward Bound team? Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right. Anybody want to say anything before we vote?
I mean, it's, we've been talking for years as a community and as a society broadly, that housing-first solutions to homelessness is the way out of the crisis we're in, and this is one step Buncombe County can take to fight that. So I think it's great. I'm proud to support it.
And I'll just add to that, that it's really good that they've already got broad other community support as well and funding that they're bringing to the table with it, and I think that's really significant.
I really commend Homeward Bound for the incredible work that each of you here and your board members and your volunteers and your donors have put forward to ensuring that this becomes a reality, and I'm really excited for Buncombe County to be a part of this solution for our homeless community. Thank you all for the work that each of you do.
I agree with everything that's been said, and I just really have a lot of gratitude to all the folks who have worked on this for years and years to get us to this point, and this is a, as folks have said, this is a concept that a lot of different, has been... People have tried to bring this together, and this is the project to do it now. So it's going to make a, it's going to make a real difference in the future life of our community and really change a lot of lives. So I'm glad that we're here today and excited about seeing it move forward. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Thank you all from Homeward Bound for being here today. Okay. Commissioners, next up is a budget amendment for Vaccine Distribution Hub and State Carry Forward. And John Hudson is here to help us with this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have two budget amendments for you this evening. These are both carryforwards of Agreement Addenda for Vaccination Services. Our Health Director, Stacy Saunders, spoke a little bit about this first one, the Vaccine Distribution Hub. You approved this Agreement Addenda in full on February 2nd. The state needs to roll forward the balance, and so that is what this budget amendment does. It also adds $75,000 of new money, so that we will be rolling forward $665,477 into the FY '22 budget for Vaccination Distribution Hub and related activities.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the Budget Amendment for Vaccine Distribution Hub and State Carry? Do we need one motion or two?
One motion can do both.
All right.
Motion to approve the Vaccine Distribution Hub and State Carry Forward Budget Amendment.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Very good. Is there anything else we need to take care of on this?
No.
Very good. So Commissioners, we come to our board appointments, and on the HRC, we have one appointment, and we have one applicant who's recommended by the HRC Chair. I'll make a motion to approve Shannon Watkins.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have two appointments. I move to appoint Angela Garner and Martin Moore.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And...
Can you repeat who did the second? I didn't get the person who made it.
Amanda, did you second that motion?
Yes.
All right. Now, for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, we spent a lot of time interviewing a lot of great folks who stepped forward to apply for this two weeks ago, and we have initial recommendations on most of them that we're going to make. We also need to make one additional decision for the last appointment, but what I'd like to do first is make a motion to approve all the applicants who I believe kind of we identified as rising to the top of the list at our last meeting. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve Boncalis, Robinson, Bill Strom, Lee, Merrill, Hernandez, Bryant, Kuhn, Stiles, Link, Nichols, and Hearn. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll say.
Is there at least somebody else?
Yeah. Do you want to do the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I messed up. There's more.
Yeah. There's these three on the left here.
Okay.
The students and Nancy.
Okay. Okay. Also, Virginia Ward, Ron Dumas, and Nancy Waldrop. Sorry about that.
And do you want to do the individual?
There's more. Also, Andrea Golden, Robert Thomas, Bruce Nelson, Kevin Frazier, Chris Joyell, Kit Kramer, and Debbie Lane. Now I think I got them all. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's the motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We do have one additional position to appoint, and there were several folks who we all really liked, but we didn't get that finished at the last meeting. So what I'd like to suggest is we just go down and everyone just maybe nominate the person that you're most in favor of, and let's see if somebody gets, see who gets the most nods. Commissioner Presley, can we start with you?
Okay. Well, before I go, I had a phone call from, one of them said she had trouble with her application getting in, Donna Inslee, said it was really important, and I think she got out to other commissioners, so I didn't know how you wanted to handle that before anyone makes a decision here.
I hadn't heard that, so she was, so she was not able to send an application in by the timeframe, or what did...
Said she had some difficulty for it going in. I think she'd reached out to Amanda and maybe Commissioner Wells also, and never could get the application in or something, or the email never come in.
I did check with staff when she sent us that email, and had them check, and they couldn't find it.
Hmm.
So that's, that's the last I heard from them. They were looking, and IT was looking, but they never did find it.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know. I mean, I think we all know Donna well, so I don't know that we necessarily needed to interview her, but I'm kind of, I would kind of lean towards the folks that we did interview as the people to draw from, just out of kind of fairness on the process, but do any of the Commissioners have any thoughts on that?
I have a match on this.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Does anybody see it differently? If someone wanted to vote for Donna Inslee, I'd be fine with it, but I'm probably going to pick from one of the people that we interviewed for myself.
Okay. Well, then I'll go with Alan Hall.
Ms. Wells?
Well, I actually feel good about any of these other ones that we have, so I could go, but I do know Commissioner Sloan, when we looked at kind of the geographic area, there needs to be somebody over in the Camlar area, I believe, when we were kind of looking at that. So with that, and also with some of her background, I think it was Rodrick... So with that, and also with some of her background, I think it was Rodrick Brown? I'm not, I can't remember what her first name was.
And was that the farm school person?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Last name Brown, the first names escaped me for some of these folks.
Oh, Lauren. Lauren, I found it. She's on Morgan Cove Road in Camlar.
Where does Hall live?
I was thinking he was in the west end too, wasn't he?
I can't, I thought he was too, but I can't remember off the top of my head. Lamar, do you have that handy?
Give me one second.
Sure. I mean, if we get this finalized in the next two minutes, we will, might set a record for completing our business before six o'clock. West.
Yes, it does say he's in the west part of the county.
Okay, all right. So Carrie, you're with Brown on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Sure. Yep. Jasmine?
Very similar. I would vote for Brown and support someone in the west.
Okay. I'm going to support Hall. Mr. Sloan?
Allison Glacken was the name from Camlar that I was interested in nominating today.
Okay.
Hall.
I support Allison Glacken.
Glacken, okay. So Hall got the most votes, not a majority, but he got the most votes. But--
Two?
So he got three, Brown and Glacken both got two. So did I add that up right, Lamar?
You did.
All right. So are we good going with Hall? He got the most, he got the most votes. It wasn't a majority vote, but does anybody object? I'll make a motion to appoint Hall, just to formalize it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and we really appreciate everyone who applied to serve on this Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. We're really excited about it and look forward to working with everybody who will be serving in that role. Okay.
Commissioner, before you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lamar.
If I may, I just wanted to let the board know that we will need to do interviews for the Board of Adjustment position. We had a vacancy due to resignation. Is August 17th okay to conduct these interviews? Right now, we have seven people that have applied.
On the 17th?
Yes.
We have an Affordable Housing Committee meeting at 1:00 that day, from 1:00 to 2:30. So just if we can work around that somehow.
We also have alternate, so if appointing an alternate is something that the board wanted to do, that could be done as well. Just trying to get the direction the board would want to move in this process.
If we appointed an alternate to be like full-time, would we need to then create another alternate appointment at some point?
That's possible. It's not something that the board would have to do.
Okay. You know, my only concern is I feel like we're going to be so busy this month that like spending a couple, like an hour and a half on interviews. Like if there's some other, like if an alternate could serve in the interim, just kind of cognizant of like how much time we're going to need to dedicate to the recovery funding decisions. So if there's a way to get past that or have an alternate, I mean, I personally would be open to that.
And then interview them in September.
Do alternates kind of fill their job until we make a--
Yes. It's up to the board's discretion, but that can be done. I could have the list of alternates at the next meeting and have that on the board appointment list. And the board can make that decision. And then if they would like to do interviews for a position at a later date, that could be accomplished as well.
Does that sound all right to the Commissioners? We'll review the alternates and at the next meeting, and we can make a decision to appoint one of them to be a, what's the correct term? Just a regular member?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't hear any objections to that, so let's plan on taking that approach. All right, we have a couple of announcements. On August 17th at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On August 17th at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for a closed session for two different items. Mr. Free, could you explain what they are?
Yes, sir. We need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3. That's to discuss a potential legal matter. And also pursuant to 143, 318, 11A5, and that's to discuss the material terms of a proposed real estate transaction. We're looking for direction from the board.
All right, very good. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do not anticipate taking any action. When we adjourn from our closed session, we will simply adjourn the meeting.